Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, in the eighteen-twenty courtroom, twenty-sixth Court Street. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act relative to the extending certain COVID- nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. Before we begin, I just want to let everybody know that Ms. Keen is out of town on a family matter, just so everybody is aware of that. She asked me to tell everybody. So first on our agenda this evening, I think, Robin, do we have some guests here this evening? Behind you?
Yes, we do. We have the Boy Scouts from...
Can you speak to the microphone so everybody can hear you, please?
Yes, we do. We have the Boy Scouts from which troop?
Troop sixty-four.
Sixty-four. And we just talked about town government and the planning department and the different boards, and they asked an hour's worth of really great questions.
Okay, so I guess I shouldn't let them on the microphone because they might ask me something too tough, right? Welcome, guys, and thank you for attending this evening. Thank you very much. Also, I just want to, I think everybody's aware, there was a shooting in Kansas City today. One person was killed and, I believe, twenty-two injured.
One is critical.
And one's in critical condition, so if everyone could please, with me, have a moment of silence and prayer for the families that are involved in the situation that happened out in Kansas City. Okay, thank you, everyone. First on our agenda this evening, we have administrative notes.
Tim?
Yes.
Lee Hartman.
Hi, Lee.
Can PAC TV set the screen up? All we see is eighteen-twenty courthouse. We don't see the view of the courtroom. PAC TV, please. Thank you.
Can you see it now, Lee? Mr. Hartman?
Not yet.
Let me know when you can, sir, please. Well, we're waiting for Mr. Hartman. He is also a bit under the weather. That's why he is attending remotely today, didn't want to get everybody sick. So that's why he's remote this evening. Anything yet, Lee?
No. Robin, can you, they do it over there in the corner, so...
Yeah, so I don't know. We're trying to get the image on these messages.
We can see you.
Yeah, I can see Mark Flaherty because he's on thing, but I don't see the courtroom. We can hear fine, though. It's up to you if you want to move ahead.
It's not live tonight.
Tate?
It's being recorded, not live. Does that make a difference?
Well, I still, we still should be visitors able to see the courtroom. There we go. All right, we're good.
All right, we're good. Okay. Now we can move on to the administrative notes. Thank you, Lee. We have the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the minutes of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and also the minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any comments or questions on the sets of minutes that I just announced?
No. Well, I will abstain from the meeting of the twenty-fourth, but otherwise the minutes are fine.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to that effect, please.
I move that we approve the minutes. We'll do it as two votes, first for December thirteenth and January tenth as a group. Second?
All in favor? Mr. Peck?
Aye, yes.
Oh, we're all here. Raise your hands, okay. Nobody's on Zoom, so we don't have to do the roll call. All right. Next, we have the minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Abstention?
Abstain.
We have three in favor and one abstention. Next, on our agenda, we have covenants, plans, and releases. A four-eight-six-three Pine Hills LLC, endorsement of a modified subdivision flagstone. Questions or comments on A four-eight-six-three?
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Raise your hand. Unanimous. Next, we have B four-two-six Little Hiows Hills LLC, bond reductions. Questions and comments from board members?
None.
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of B four-two-six? Unanimous. Next, we have B six-two-two Topper Hill Lot Release fifty-five forty-five C dash three-zero. Questions or comments? Seeing none? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have Form A plans. A four-eight-seven-two Topper Hill Phase Two LLC Lot Line Adjustment. Questions and/or comments from board members? Seeing none? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? All right, thank you. Unanimous. Next, we have A four-eight-seven-one Thorn dyke Development Corporation Lot Line Adjustment. Questions and/or comments? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next, we have ZBA case four-one-one-nine. We are not the adjudicary board in this case. We're advisory to the zoning board of appeals, so there will be a zoning board of appeals meeting when the final adjudicary decision will be made. Staff, when is the ZBA meeting?
Yeah, Mark Flaherty, Mark Flaherty is here on Zoom to present.
I just want to, I just want to know the date because I haven't even read it yet. When is the Zoom meeting, the zoning board meeting? Okay, while she's finding that, I'll read it into the record. Okay, ZBA four-one-one-nine sixty-four off Billington Street, Matthew and Gabriel Squelante, hope I pronounced that correctly. A special permit required per section two oh-three dash one, one, C, one, accessory building location, and per section two oh-five dash four, R twenty-five, and dimensional table to waiver rear yard setback to construct a detached garage. The date of the zoning board meeting?
February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-sixth is when the zoning board meeting is. Full-up proponent?
Mark Flaherty.
Good evening, Mark. Mark, I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
You're on mute, Mark.
Mark, I think your speaker is off. Can't hear you. The miracles of modern technology.
Better?
Now, now I can hear you, yes, please.
Good evening. Sorry about that. I represent Matthew and Gabriel Squelante. We're off Billington Street sixty-four. We're taking down an existing two-car garage and putting a new two-car garage up. Because it's detached building, we need to meet the underlying zoning requirements of a forty-foot rear yard setback. The existing garage is only thirty-three feet off the rear yard versus forty. The new garage is going to be twenty-eight versus forty feet off that way. It seems to be able to fit nicely with the existing driveway. The Squelantes are going to have a game room over there, over the garage itself, and it's going to be, it's going to be fed with water and sewer, and it's going to, it's a, it's a remote site, backs up into a larger, maybe a twenty-five acre piece, and we think that, you know, there is going to be no impacts to the neighbors or to the rear yard for the approval of the release necessary from the zoning board of appeals from forty down to twenty-eight feet. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from staff, please?
Yes, I just wanted to indicate that back in two thousand and fourteen, the petitioner received a special permit for a detached garage in this location, and it was larger than the one they're proposing tonight. So the special permit just expired. They never moved forward with the garage, so they're back tonight requesting this garage again, but it's actually a smaller footprint this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will go to the planning board, unless first, there are any questions from people in the audience? Any questions? Comments? Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom? Robin wishing to speak?
I'm not seeing anyone looking to speak.
Mr. Peck?
The only question I have to mark is I do not see what will be happening with the roof drainage and where it goes. And as a gable roof, you know, it, and gutters and downspouts should gather a location for the water that will not flow off the site.
Well, it's, it's on the revised plan to the zoning board of appeals. David would be happy to show some stripped roof drains to be able to capture that water versus, we're not showing it right now, but we will, on a revised plan, show that roof drainage.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
That's my only comment, but until we get to conditions and the potential additional condition, should we approve it, is we have standard language that, you know, they're requesting a bathroom on the second floor, and we should add the language that the second floor shall not become a dwelling. We have standard language.
In the garage, yes, understood.
That's, that's fine with the Squelantes.
Okay. Respectfully submitted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Mr. Donaldson?
I have no comments. Steve took my bathroom comment, and I agree with the language, so I'm in agreement, and that's it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blowton?
Thank you. Through the chair, Robin, the original approval for the larger, was there a full bathroom included at that time?
I don't recall if there was a full bathroom, but we did have a condition not allowing it to be a dwelling.
I, I, thank you. I appreciate that language, but as Mr. Hartman has regularly stated at various forums throughout town, it's one thing to have a condition, it's another thing to be able to enforce it, and we have a real challenge if someone is actually using that space in terms of discovering that they're using it and then what we do about it. We can really face some real issues with that. So my concern is having a full bath, so I'm, I have no problem. I understand that the idea is to make it a rec space and a rec room. Having a half-bath makes sense rather than running into the house, but a full bath there with a shower suggests to me that the ultimate intention is to turn it into a living space. And whether or not the current owners do that or a subsequent owner does that, it becomes a problem because the town is never going to be able to track it. So that's my concern, and I don't know if the petitioners represented would like to address that.
Mr. Flaherty?
Well, it seems to me that it's, maybe at some point in time in the future, the town fathers might decide that certainly, certain structures should become accessory dwelling units. So it's to be able to set it up right now, and if, and if, if the building inspector who wants to, if he wants an affidavit from the Squelantes that it's never, it's not to be used as living area, I'm sure Matthew and Gabriel would be happy to issue that affidavit. I don't know what more can be done than that. It's, that's my only response right now, Steve.
Would they be willing to reduce that to a half-bath?
It's, I, I'm not, I'm not in a position to say yes or no to that, Steve.
Okay, thank you, because the structure would not qualify under the proposed accessory dwelling unit statute because we're here giving it a special permit, so it doesn't actually meet the zoning requirements as we sit here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Can I ask staff this question I didn't quite have the answer to? Did the original proposal have a full bath?
On the original proposal back in two thousand and fourteen, I don't have the plans in front of me for the original one. We just had, we had a condition saying it would be allowed to be used for accessory residential use, but no dwelling, no commercial business.
Right, so we can certainly make a suggestion to the zoning board of appeals that that stipulation is in effect, and it would also suggest that it become a half-bath versus a full bath, and the zoning board can discuss that with Mr. Flaherty and the proponent at their meeting. Mr. Flaherty?
I think that's an appropriate condition and recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. We'll be happy to discuss that with the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
But in addition to that, or as an additional sentence, you know, the standard language of shall not become a dwelling unit.
That was already in it, yes.
But, but going to a half-bath sort of ensures it. If things change in the future, you know, they could come back, but that's our standard approach. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other comments at all from board members? No? Anything for Mr. Flaherty? All set?
No, that's, that's good. I'm, I'm set.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. What is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we approve case four-one-one-nine with the conditions as discussed. Second?
All in favor? Unanimous. Good luck at the zoning board. Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda this evening, we have a site plan review. Renewable Energy Development Partners, Canning Solar Project on one oh-one Tahonet Road, map one twenty-six, lot seven dash three, ground-multed solar phototalic system. Hope I said that right. Photalic?
Photalic.
Photalic.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you, sir. Thank you for having us. Hank, we met with Renewable Energy Development Partners.
Yeah, I think you need to move the speaker a little closer so everybody can hear you, sir.
How's that?
I'm thinking closer. I still can't hear. Is it on?
It's on. It's just, it's got to get closer.
It's got to get closer to you. I'm sorry.
How's that?
Much better.
All right. So, good evening. Hank, we met with Renewable Energy Development Partners. We're the applicant and proposed, developer of the proposed project. With me this evening, I've got Steve Wea from Weston and Sampson. He's our design-build partner for the structures you're about to see. Also on Zoom, I noticed that our land use and zoning council, John Clavens, is on, and I would also just point out that Beals and Thomas did our wetlands and survey work, and Sarah Sterns, who I'm sure you know, got the night off because it's Valentine's Day, so she left me to do this job, but wishing her well. So, I'm in charge of this, Patrick? Is that true? So if you, if you could bear with me, I've got maybe ten minutes or so of a presentation to help clarify the application to the board.
Sir, take as long as you like.
I'd like to start with just an overview to give you a sense of what you're going to see. So this is a, this is a project that we recently constructed. So what we're proposing is a network of agricultural canal solar canopies at an existing cranberry bog site over an existing network of agricultural canals. There's about two miles' worth of the canopies that you see in these pictures, and the project will require no tree clearing. All of the work will be in disturbed areas. All of the disturbed areas are currently managed for agricultural production. It's an active cranberry bog. The canopies are designed to be compatible with the agricultural use, so the cranberry grower is going to continue to harvest the cranberry bogs. The canals are going to continue to be used as agricultural canals like they are now. This will be our fourth canopy project with this team. We've got two projects that were built in the past couple of years that are up and running in southeastern Mass and cranberry country. We have another project that's under construction right now. So far, the feedback from all the landowners we've worked with are, it's, they're very happy. It's a, it's a win-win solution. You've got a beneficial reuse of existing land that's already being used for agriculture, and the creation of solar electricity on top of it is a, is a beneficial use and provides benefits for the landowner and, and the solar owner. So let me then go to the site to orient you folks. So the site is owned by AD Makepeace. It's way out in the boonies from here. It's closer to Carver and Wareham than it is to downtown Plymouth. It's about a two-hundred acre lot, surrounded by active agricultural use and undeveloped land, most of it owned by, and most of it in common ownership under AD Makepeace. The address that's been assigned by the town is one oh-one Tahonet Road. It's in the rural residential zoning district, and then the access, here's a picture of the lot. So this is a relatively recent aerial photo. This is, you can tell that it's a recently reconstructed set of cranberry bogs, and the lot is essentially the bog site. And that's the, right here is the Wankinko River, and that's the Plymouth-Carver town Access to the site is off of Federal Road in Carver, and there's an existing network of bog roads that comes off of Federal Road, crosses over the river, and gets to the solar lot or the agricultural lot. These access roads are already in place. They're used by the cranberry grower and their berry trucks, and we've demonstrated, I'll get to it later on, but demonstrated to the fire department that there's adequate access and turning radio on all the, on all the corners. So let me get to the project. Really can't see this very well, but, so those series of red and blue lines represent two different types of solar canopies, and I might as well just get to it. So the red lines are what we're calling table canopies. Here's a picture of a, of an installed canopy. It's a, a line of columns installed at the top of the bank on either side of the canal, and then trusses and purlins span the canal, and the solar modules get mounted on top of the, of that superstructure. This low edge here is a minimum of eight feet off the ground, and the high end, they're, they're pitched like a shed roof to shed rain and snow and also to, to increase solar gain. And the high end, high side, I think we're proposing a maximum height of about sixteen feet, and that allows the landowner to get under that high side with equipment to demuck the canals over the twenty, twenty-five year lifespan of the canopies. The other flavor of canopy that we have is a cantilevered version, and these, these would be installed where there's not a fully drivable bog road on either side of the canal. Some of these new bogs, the interior road is at the bog level, which is where the, the harvest trucks drive. So instead of putting a column line on that side, we've, well, our clever engineering partner came up with a cantilever design, and so this is what it would look like. We don't, actually, the projects we have built so far, we haven't built this, this type of cantilevered canopy, but we have, like, built a few prototypes and have engineered it, and we're looking forward to building these. Here's just a few construction photos so you can get a better flavor for what it looks like. One of the comments from the engineering department was geared at the runoff from the lower end of the canopies, assuming it would act like a roof needing a gutter, but you can see that there's significant gaps between the modules, so really, there's only one panel's worth of runoff that, the, the panels shed the runoff around their perimeter. There's just another view looking down the canal. So the construction methods, again, no, no tree clearing required, no, no significant site preparation of any, of, of, anything substantial. The piles are steel piles driven with an excavator, just like that. It's a vibratory unit, and they just get kind of vibrated into the ground. And then once the, once the columns are in place, the trusses get swung on between the columns, and from there, their superstructure gets built from platforms that are mounted on the columns themselves. And this is just another aerial view of a recently completed project. So I would like to just quickly address the solar bylaw and our compliance with it, and then I'm happy to field any questions. As you folks know, solar is allowed by right, subject to site plan review. Section two oh-seven dash eleven has requirements for large-scale solar. We believe that this project complies with all of the requirements in your bylaw. We've got a, in our submittal, section two point four has a point-by-point response to all of those requirements. We have received comments from engineering and from fire. We responded to those, and then subsequently, we met with both Plymouth Fire and Carver Fire in a joint meeting because it's very likely that Carver will be the responding fire department, given that it's, they've got stations a lot closer than Plymouth does. So we met with them and, and went over safety and emergency response protocol and, and access, and agreed to have some follow-up meetings prior to construction and post-construction. So our takeaway was that fire seemed satisfied with what our proposal, with our proposal. And then lastly, we have, we did submit an application, a notice of intent, to the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission unanimously approved the project a couple weeks ago. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll go to staff. Patrick, quickly, please?
Good evening. All right, so I just have a few comments. I'll run through them as quick as I can. On sheet Charlie zero zero two, that talks about the restoration plantings, the seeding schedule. They refer to the plantings as "grass," quote unquote. There was an email submitted by Beals and Thomas on February twelfth. I believe that you have that in your packet, I hope. Just to provide a little bit of clarification, that the seed actually, the grass actually refers to a pollinator-friendly seed mix. You'll see the seed schedule, the different genus species are on that sheet. So it was just kind of like, I wouldn't say a typo, but just a clarification on what grass meant. It actually is talking about this pollinator-friendly mix. Also, sheet Charlie one zero three, that's the abutting property plan sheet, shows the sightline distances to the nearest residence, and you could tell, or you could see from the closest residence to this proposed project is... is over a mile long. So it definitely kind of holds within that threshold there. So we are, with, with the regards to the sightline distances, the residents, they're fine. And I think the other one, the second largest one, is close to a mile and a half, I think.
That's correct.
Yeah, over 6,500 feet or so. Also, the applicant provided a statement in their narrative that a construction stormwater pollution preventative plan, or SWIP, falls within the required threshold of under one acre. So they won't have to submit that. Just to reiterate what the engineer has just talked about, do the unique system design and construction. There won't be any trees cut and minimal site disturbance during, throughout this process. Remember, these irrigation canals, they're under active agriculture. They're not considered wetlands. It went before, this project went before Conservation Commission. And they did file for a notice of intent, unanimously approved the orders of conditions through the CONCOM for that reason. And it is all under active agriculture, and it is exempt use under the Wetlands Protection Act and by law. Also, on 20711, capital C, two, little c, under security, I'm just going to read it into the record. The ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system must be physically secured by measures, including, but not limited to, appropriate fence material, construction, locking devices, and surveillance equipment. Reason why I bring this up is you could tell on the site plans that there is no fencing along the arrays. The applicant states that because of the height of the 16-foot and up to 20-foot height between the two different systems, they're going to be out of reach for the normal human being. So because of that, we're looking to the planning board to see if that constitutes adequate security measures. Also, because the system exceeds the 2-megawatt DC generation of power, the applicant agrees to post a guaranteed, performance guaranteed under, as a cash bond. And that's also required in the same section. And with all that said, staff does recommend with the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to bring it to the board. This is allowed use. Is there anybody here in the audience wishing to speak?
Yeah, I will ask. Thanks.
Is there anybody on Zoom who would wish to speak?
Yes.
Please, please state your name for the record. And you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Meg Sheehan. I'm from Community Land and Water Coalition. I am very familiar with RBDP. You might recall that this is the company that clear-cut 25 acres off of Herring Pond Road for solar in about 2016 with just a building permit. That was a project in the ACEC. I'm also very familiar with the projects that they've shown in the picture there that's up at Swanhold and Carver on the bogs. So as far as this location, I just want to say, first of all, it was very, it's very difficult to comment because it's almost impossible to get plans and the engineering comments and whatnot ahead of these meetings. Your agendas come out within 48 hours, and then people have to scramble around to try to get the information. So I would, first of all, request that you continue this meeting. I understand it's not a public hearing, apparently, but there's really no way for the public to adequately review this project and all the memos and whatnot that have gone back and forth with the fire department. I understand you just said you had some new information on February 12th. So that's, first of all. And again, we would request that the planning board post all of these applications and plans on their website, just like other nearby towns do, so that people can see what's going on. So number of questions about this project. Is there battery energy storage? I see that the plans have a number of concrete pads. What are they for? To the applicant, through you, Mr. Chair.
I didn't hear your last question. What was the last part of that, please? Again?
Is there battery energy storage or best associated with this project?
Could you answer that question, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Yes, there is. We noted in our application, battery, storage, equipment, accessory use to the solar project.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
You have about 20 more seconds. Finish your comments, please.
I'm going to request more than a few minutes because this is a major multimillion-dollar project. And you just said that you gave the applicant as long as they wanted. And I think I'm the only member of the public here asking questions. So I would like to know, what is the megawatts of the battery energy storage?
Let me ask you how much more time you need. And I will ask the board if they would like to extend the time, please. How much more time do you need?
I have a number of questions. I have about 10 more questions. I suppose it depends on how long the applicant takes to answer them.
Okay, so what I want you to do is name all 10 questions that you have because we're not going to go back and forth with the proponent. So please name the 10 questions that you have. And the proponent will write them down. And then at the end of that, he will answer the questions, the proponent. So please ask your 10 questions.
What is the megawatt of the battery energy storage? How many solar panels are there? What is the grounds for Mr. Faris saying that this is exempt agriculture? It is not, according to what the Conservation Commission wrote in their order of conditions. They said it was subject to the Wetlands Protection Act. So what are the grounds for saying that it's exempt agriculture? What was previously here? When were these bogs built? Is this a site of the excavation that took place from about 2010 to 2016 to reconfigure the Carver side bogs to make these bogs? According to Google Earth, there was excavation here and filling with debris. And according to some people, sewage sludge. What is underneath the bogs and what was buried there? How were the canals created? Were they created by diverting the Wankinko River? Will A.D. Makepeace continue the sand and gravel mining operation that is adjacent?
Excuse me, Meg, you can slow down on your questions a little bit so we can write them down. Back up two questions, please, if you don't mind.
How were the agricultural canals created? Were they created by diverting the Wankinko River? Was this project cre... Is this, this project is adjacent to the 200-acre sand and gravel mining project that A.D. Makepeace has a permit for from the Zoning Board of Appeals? Will A.D. Makepeace continue that sand and gravel mining project adjacent to this site?
That's not a question that they need to answer, but thank you. Is that at the end of your questions?
I have, I have one more question.
One more question, please ask it, please.
And will this be reviewed by the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act? Because this was part of the Tijonet mixed-use development, and it was part of a biodiversity hotspot that was supposed to be preserved for smart growth and open space, according to the MIPA certificate from 2008.
Okay, thank you very much for your questions. Now we'll go to the proponent. We have them written down here. Mr. Ball, and as we wrote them down, could you go one at a time, please? It's not back and forth, just answer the questions.
Mr. Chair, could you just assist me? The only one I didn't get was number three. I didn't understand the question for number three.
How many panels were there?
Can you pull the microphone closer to you, please?
I have, I understood question number one to be, what was the size of the battery system? Number two is how many solar panels? I didn't get what question number three was.
Why is it your position that this is not subject to CONCOM and wetlands?
Okay. Okay, so I'll take them in order. The battery size, the final battery equipment hasn't been definitively sized yet. We showed on the plans room for three separate battery cabinets. Ultimately, the battery systems will be designed to comply both with the state's storage requirement, which is 50% of the power of the rated capacity of the solar for a minimum of two hours. And then also, the batteries will be designed and sited in accordance with NFPA 855, which the state has adopted as a statewide standard for battery design and location. So that's the answer to question one.
Thank you.
The number of solar panels, we, we listed on the plans, assuming the solar panel sizes change every year. We've picked a representative panel, and there's roughly 7,800 modules. And the total footprint of the project, in accordance with your bylaw, is slightly less than five acres.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to question three, I, I don't have the notice of intent in front of me.
Again, pull the microphone.
I'm sorry, I don't have the notice of intent in front of me, but I, I believe that we presented to the Conservation Commission all of the natural wetlands areas that surround the bogs, as well as the areas within the bogs that were formerly wetland bogs as, which are now, which have been recreated or reshaped under ag exemption to be the bogs they are now. But I, we, we disclosed all of the prior and current wetlands information to the Conservation Commission in our application. I don't believe I can answer questions four, five, six, or seven because I'm not familiar, that's, those are questions for the landowner. I don't know what was here previously. I don't know how these canals were created. I don't know what's under them. I don't have any information about their sand and gravel operations. We, we're developing solar on this project. That's the, that's the extent of our involvement. And then with respect to MIPA review, I would just note that the project doesn't trigger any of the MIPA review thresholds. So that's why it's not subject to MIPA review.
That's it. That's all the questions, and you've answered them. Some of them you can't because that has, those questions would have to be answered by the landowner themselves, being the landlord. Patrick, of the questions that he can't answer, can staff answer any of those?
With regard to the history of the bog canals? No.
What's underneath?
I wouldn't know.
How long were the bog, how long have the bogs been established and location they're in now?
I don't have that history.
Wild projection, let's say. 30 years, 40 years?
I can't answer that question. I, I don't know. Sorry.
No problem. All right, I'm going to bring it, unless there's somebody else on Zoom that has questions. Is there anybody else on Zoom that has any questions or comments? Lee, anybody? Meg, you've already asked your questions. You've had your time. We're moving on. Anybody else wishing to speak on Zoom? Nobody. Yes or no?
Yep. I'm not seeing anyone else.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the board.
So has there been any, been any studies done in regards to the water that's underneath, that will be underneath the panels? Is there any kind of, later on, chemical, chemical issues or reactions that will get into that water? Because my understanding is those canal waters is going to be the waters that's feeding the soil and the cranberries. Is that correct?
That's correct. Sir, I'm not familiar with any studies about groundwater quality impacts from runoff from solar panels. You know, solar panels are solid-state sealed units unless they're damaged. I can't imagine, my speculation is that there's, there's, there's nothing to leak from them. And that they are modular, so there's 7,800 individually sealed solid-state units. I know that in our dealings with the landowners, the landowners are quite keenly aware of the importance of water quality to their crop. So the landowners at least haven't raised that as a concern. And I haven't heard of as a concern in the industry either.
And this type of solar development has, how long or how new or how old is this type of development that you're proposing?
Well, so I would, solar canopies in parking lots have been around for quite a while. And you're probably more familiar seeing those canopy structures. The use of canopy structures over agricultural canals, I think is a, at least in Massachusetts, is a relatively recent development. The state does encourage the deployment of solar canopies over agricultural canals because they recognize that it's a good beneficial use. I don't, we, our first project, and I'm not aware of how many other firms are doing it, our first project went operational in 2021.
And so you stated earlier that there is going to be battery storage for some of the energy. Where is, where else is this energy going to? Is it for the, the farmer? Is it going back to National Grid? Is it being shared amongst the community? Where, where is this power actually going once it's stored?
Thank you for that question. I, I had it in my presentation and forgot to say it.
That's okay. I got your back.
I appreciate it. So the project will be structured as a community-shared solar project under the SMART program. And the way that works is that the electricity itself gets exported to Eversource. But virtually, the Eversource will allow beneficiaries of the, of the exported power. So about 50% of the power will go to a local industrial concern to satisfy their electricity needs. And then the remaining 50% will be sold to local homes and businesses at a discount. So the beneficiaries of the power produced will be local businesses and residents.
So you, you were actually asking in regards to security, meeting in security measures and, but the canopies or anything like that. What, I agree with you that it has the height that would be, wouldn't be for a normal person. Not even a manute bowl would be able to, like, climb and get up there. But has there been any other thought towards security? Just because, I mean, I could show up with a ladder and do what I want to do. So I, I would like maybe some other suggestions or something else that would help prevent in so-called security in regards to that.
Yes.
Even if, even if it's, you know, I don't know, cameras or whatever the case may be.
That was good. Thank, thank you again for that question. It's something else I was supposed to talk about.
Like I said, I got your back.
So the site, the site itself provides some level of security. It's a remote site. It's gated. It's on private property. It's really internal to a vast area of land holdings. So that in and of itself is a reasonable measure of physical security. The canopies, the lowest point at which you could access the panels or the wiring will be a minimum of eight feet off the ground. But to your point, someone walking around with a ladder or in the back of a pickup truck, if they wanted to, could get up there. And so we have, and we discussed this with Mr. Sinclair at the engineering and fire review meeting, that he's going to be looking, as part of the building permit application, some sort of a physical barrier on the backsides of the panels, like a non-conductive mesh, or just one more layer of nuisance control so that someone's really going to have to be motivated to get in. And the, what I failed to mention is that all of the electrical infrastructure for the project will either be suspended up under the canopies or buried underground within the footprint of the roads. So in those, in the, along the portions of the canopy where the wiring is on the back of the modules, we'll put some physical barrier, like a non-conductive mesh, like Mr. Sinclair recommended. And you'll see that in the building, in the electrical permit applications.
I thank you very much for your, for your answers. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Peck, please.
A couple of things. You mentioned the lifespan of the batteries or the, or the installation would be 25 years or so?
The, the program that we're intending to participate in is a 20-year program. I haven't been around, I've been doing solar for 13 years now, and the projects that we built 13 years ago are still running strong. So I don't know personally what the life, the real lifespan of a solar project is, but it's certainly at least 20 to 25 years.
So a related question is, what kind of maintenance do these cabinets, these BESS inverter cabinets need? And a related thing is, you know, do they have toxic chemicals in them? And is there a chance of leaks into the groundwater from those cabinets?
So the battery equipment, the easiest way to describe it is picture 40 or so large marine batteries, sealed marine batteries in a steel enclosure. So the batteries themselves are sealed and maintenance-free. They don't, there's no like changing of the electrolytes. And, and they are placed in a, in a steel-designed weatherproof enclosure with, you know, monitoring systems built in. As far as the maintenance obligations for that, they're, they're not, my understanding at least, is they're not quite as maintenance-free as a solar project is, but they're not maintenance-intensive. There's reasons to, or reasons to periodically check on the control systems. There's electronics. There's fans, ventilation systems. So that's the extent of the maintenance requirements. And as far as, like I said, the, the batteries do contain an electrolyte, just like your car battery does, but the electrolytes in a sealed container, it's not circulating through the system. It's, it's, it's designed to, it's been designed to be sealed and maintenance-free.
Do the batteries need to be changed therefore, like every two years or four years?
My understanding, sir, is not, the batteries don't need to be routinely changed. They don't, they have a much, I should say, that the, the battery units themselves have a shorter estimated lifespan than the solar system does. So at some point, the battery system will be changed out, but that's more on a wholesale basis.
And a final question, this is to Patrick Farah. Has the Energy Committee, you mentioned staff is supportive, you mentioned, was that the planning staff? Or has the, also has the Energy Committee weighed in on this particular project?
The Energy Committee did not weigh in on this project.
Either way, either pro or con?
They did not hear the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Mr. Baldwin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, addressing the change from grass to pollination, pollinator mix, which I did see in the, in the paper, in the materials. Do we know of those native species in that pollinator mix?
I've reviewed them. They are, they're indigenous to the area.
Great. Sir, do you have any, I was trying to go through the engineering specs, and I didn't see a couple of things. First, the finished assembly, what's the wind load for that?
The wind design load?
Correct.
Oh, perfect question for my engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Steve, we are with Weston and Sampson. It's the rated wind speed per the building code, which I think here is 127 or 128 miles an hour.
I just have slight concern, obviously, given that this is essentially a two-mile-long sail that's being installed, and we just want to make sure that it stays put.
So do we.
Is, because I know this will be coming up, will there be any sand or gravel removed as part of your installation process?
No, sir. There's no, in fact, there's not really any excavation whatsoever for the project. The piles get driven into the ground. There's a minor amount of site work associated with the equipment pad area, and that's it. And, and clearly the excavation in the roads to bury the electrical conduit and backfill.
Thank you. Have you engaged yet in any discussions with the town regarding a pilot agreement with respect to this project?
No, sir. It's typically, we don't do that until we're much further along.
Through the chair to staff. Obviously, the bond issue is included in there, and that's important, and I thank you for doing that. Given that this is a 20-year proposed program, which makes sense given the investment that's being put in, we have to consider the cost escalation associated with a removal from today's dollars to $20.44. Do we have a methodology that we can use that includes either a periodic review or an escalator to make sure that the bond keeps up with the expected cost?
So the section of the bylaw states that, that a performance bond is required, and what happens is it goes into discussion between the applicant and the building commissioner. They negotiate an amount that's suitable for the lifetime of the project.
So they will be taking into account the potential expense from 20 years from now?
I can't, I can't speak to the building commissioner, but I would presume so.
So Chairman, can I jump in?
Yes, please, Mr. Hardman.
So typically, what's required is a cash bond. And Patrick, is this a cash bond? Is that what we're requiring?
Yes.
And that is placed in an interest-bearing account. So the good news for the applicant is when they're done, they have, to some degree, investment if they do what's right. For the town, it's in an interest-bearing account, so it does keep up with inflation.
Thank you, Mr. Hardman. I believe that's all of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. I have a couple of questions myself. I think it was mentioned in the report here that there is no residential homes within a certain distance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, let me ask, is there any future residential homes to be built near these solar panels in the future? Or is this to remain in agriculture unless it's pulled out of agriculture, the entire area that abuts the properties?
From my review, the entire property is under 80 makepeace ownership.
Okay.
And it is under agriculture. Whether they want to pull it out of chapter at some point, that's in the future. I don't, I can't speak to that.
Mm-hmm. And in your experience, doing all the reviews of solar panels on cranberry bogs or along the waterway that supplies the cranberry bogs, have there been any history of incidents with these batteries having leaked that anybody's aware of?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, I.
Again, can you pull that mic close to you so I can hear?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I hate to, I mean, I'm.
I'm just asking the question.
Don't want to hold myself out as an expert across the industry. I, my understanding is that the concerns that have materialized associated with battery storage have been related to fire and runaway fires. And I believe those have been, they were associated with, you know, prior generations of battery technology. The NFPA 855 that I referenced incorporates some UL testing requirements, that the battery manufacturers have to demonstrate that one cell or one battery module melting down won't, will do so independently, it won't contribute to a runaway. So there's been a number that the industry has, is well aware that there's some bad data points out there for, for fire. That's the only concern that I'm aware of that's been associated with battery technology.
Let me finish. Pat, please. Okay. Fire department access, right, to the property? Are the roads, the access roads around the cranberry bogs capable of sustaining the weight of an engine in the fire department?
We, we, we met with, like I said, both the Carver and the Plymouth Fire Departments. The Carver Deputy Chief is very familiar with this site. He's also a cranberry grower. So the loaded berry trucks use these bog roads. I believe, at least from Carver's perspective, he thought that, that the roads were more than adequate to carry the weight of emergency equipment. We did agree with the fire department prior to receiving a building permit or prior to construction, I can't remember exactly what we talked about, but going out there and doing a site walk with both fire departments and walking the access roads. And even though the engineering drawing shows that there's adequate space to turn their emergency vehicles, just to put our eyeballs on the entire path. So we're prepared to improve the roads wherever necessary for fire access. Although I, like I said, I don't believe it will be necessary.
Okay. So how many surrounding towns are involved other than Carver? Is there one more town involved in this process?
The, the project is exclusively in Plymouth. Access is, the preferred access is off of Federal Road in Carver. And I believe, again, I'm not an expert on where fire stations are, but I, the Carver Deputy Chief pointed out that there were five or six local fire stations in Carver and Wareham that were closer to this site than any of the Plymouth stations.
So is there an agreement written with Carver or Wareham that they're going to respond? If there is, and is, happens to be, go ahead, wing, there isn't, necessary for a response to the facility?
Mr. Chair, my understanding is that those protocols are already in place. We, we brought that, we were curious ourselves as to how that would happen. And my understanding, talking to both your chief and the Carver Deputy Chief, was those protocols are already in place, and whatever the responding community is, Plymouth might need to backfill Carver's station temporarily if, if that's the case. But again, the, the nature of the project is such that they're not there to put out fires. They're there to make sure that the fire doesn't spread, that this, there's, it's not a, this isn't a facility that's inhabited. The, the battery, the protocol for the battery equipment is to, is to let it burn and control it. So my understanding, at least, in the meeting with the fire department, was there, emergency responses there to make sure that the surrounding areas are protected and the, and the fire doesn't spread.
Okay, thank you. Patrick, I think has a document. Could you?
Yes, so you should have, the planning board should have a copy of a supplemental information packet dated February 5th from Beals and Thomas. This goes into great detail with the discussions and the meetings with both police, fire departments regarding emergency vehicle turn radiuses, access road, and so on. I actually spoke with Deputy David Malaguti, who said that besides the knockbox, they were going to request or require a couple of knockboxes, knockbox, knocksboxes.
Dedicated knocksbox for each town.
Can you speak to the microphone pad? I'm sorry, getting here.
Uh, knocksboxes. Other than that, they were satisfied with the supplement information provided by Beals and Thomas for access.
I read the report. I want the public that's viewing, and everybody to understand that the fire department has reviewed this to include the battery situation throughout the process. Correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, the fire department has reviewed the entire project and has a report there. And I wanted the viewing public to understand that it already was reviewed.
Correct.
Worked with both fire departments, being Carver and Plymouth, to ensure that there would be coverage to contain a potential situation on site. Correct?
Correct. There was more than one meeting. Also, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please.
Several months ago, when we were first made aware of this project, I did a preliminary review, and the question came up with the location of the equipment pad, as well as the batteries. It was very close, or it was within the 200-foot riparian zone of the Wan Kinko River. Speaking with Beals and Thomas, their engineering staff, they actually relocated it. How far, how, how long is that distance? It's several hundred feet further away from that 200-foot riparian zone to the other side of the bog. So they, they did listen to staff with regard to some of the concerns that I had originally, and they addressed them with this filing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Baldwin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the transformer specs, I spent more time looking at the panel specs. I should have looked more at the transformer specs. I note that this is an oil and natural air-cooled transformer, and that the oil type listed identifies that it's both either mineral oil or degradable oil on request. Do you know whether or not this will be using mineral oil or degradable oil?
Typically, I mean, I think we've used the, the biodegradable oil and all the transformer, all the projects we use on agricultural land, just as a matter of course. And we're happy to comply with that condition. We're a long way from ordering transformers, but it's, my understanding at least, it's, most of them you have to ask the other way. You know?
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to approve, but that would include with the biodegradable oil, we can have that written into the decision, please? The extra potential added security, please? Is that okay, sir?
Yes, sir.
Anything else that I missed, gentlemen, other than what's in staff's report?
You know, written approval by the fire department. We can't compel, you know, Carver's approval, but having heard that you've had multiple meetings, you know, the issue of alarms, you know, whether it's a smoke detector or the knocksbox, you know, the, you know, we've heard lithium batteries and, you know, can create problems. But if the fire department has scrutinized this and knows that alarm systems have been put in place, I just want a written approval from the fire department.
Patrick?
Just trying to get the, the three recommendations. So the first one is, the applicant agrees to utilize biodegradable oil in the transformers.
Mm-hmm.
Second is additional security measures on the.
What we discussed was something on the back of the modules to protect, prevent access to the wires that are strung there. So some sort of a wiring protection.
Can you read them off to me, Patrick, please?
Okay, so additional security on, in the, with the type of, what's it, you said a mesh or something? Maybe you could, if you could send me some data on that.
Sure.
In the morning, that'd be great.
Sure.
And then I'll go ahead and put that on.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then the third is the written approval from the fire department. Although, just so that the board knows, I already have as a recommendation that, if I can find it. Yes. Number three, the applicant agrees to address any comments, concerns submitted by Engineering Fire Department and the Conservation Commission as needed prior to issuance of any permits. That's a standard.
Yeah.
Recommendation. But I'll add these two other ones.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay, is that sufficient for the board members? Now we have a motion and a second? Yes? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand. Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Whoever didn't. Whoever didn't clap has to come up and read the next hearing right next to me. Who didn't clap? Come on, who didn't? All right, nobody wants to admit it.
So, Tim?
Yes.
This is a, it's a continued hearing, so you don't need to read it.
I can't quite hear you right now, the Boy Scouts are walking out, so give me two minutes, please.
One minute. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I should say Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, right?
Yeah.
That's right. Huh?
Female Boy Scouts.
The terminology, I don't know the exact terminology, and I apologize that I don't.
Just Girl Scouts.
Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts is the way I grew up. All right, Mr. Hartman, what did you say, sir?
So, this is a continued hearing, you don't need to read the notice.
I'm just going to read a continued hearing on the bottom here in my agenda, if that's okay?
Yeah.
All right, public hearing, B 644, BCI Properties LLC, VOSD, 15 Coles Lane, continued from 11024, new one-two-family residential dwelling and existing one-family residential dwelling on 2.7 acres of land located at 15 Coles Lane. The applicant is applying for a village open space development special permit per Section 207-5 of the zoning bylaw, again, continued from January 10th, 2024. Good evening, sir, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, and you folks?
Say again?
I said, "I'm well, thank you, and you folks."
Oh, I'm doing fantastic, thank you.
Can I just make a brief comment first, Tim?
You can make any comments you'd like.
Quick overview, just to help mark out here, last month, he was before the board, and the one item that he, they, you discussed doing was shifting the dwelling unit, the building, further from the rear property line, closer to the front property line, in order to create a larger buffer to the butters in the rear. So the plan that was revised before each night, basically, that is the change on the plan. The building was shifted forward 15 feet to allow for a better buffer in the rear, and he also was addressing the engineering comments. The plan is now under final review with the engineering department right now, and we've got a general condition that says that the final plans will continue to address engineering. So it was a kind of a simple change since our last meeting, and he also did share it with the Sullivans that are the rear butters, and they were happy with the change in the plan. Thank you.
Okay, that's fantastic. Do you have any comments you'd like to make before?
No, I think, last time we were here, I was the one that suggested that you might give us a little leeway as far as moving the building forward, which makes the butter to the rear happy, and hopefully, that makes you folks happy. The only thing I would ask, since there's four of you voting, and I need all four votes, before the public hearing is closed, can I poll the board, please?
Poll the board? Is that allowed? To poll the board before we move into a vote? Lee?
Lee.
I think, I think a nod of heads, maybe, if you think, or maybe if there's somebody who has serious concerns, that the applicant, I think, is asking for a continuance if that's the case, but maybe it's a nod of heads.
Just raise it during our comments.
We'll just raise it during our comments, before a vote is taken, okay?
All right.
All right? And then if it doesn't go during the questioning period and the comment period, then you can request a continuance, okay?
Fair enough.
Fair enough. Okay, as this is a continued public hearing, is there anybody here in the room that would like to speak? Seeing no one, is there anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
I'm not seeing anyone looking to be recognized.
Okay, thank you. Then I will bring it back to the board, and I would suggest, before we begin our comments, to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor of closing the public hearing? The public hearing is now officially closed, and I will bring it back to the board. Mr. Peck?
Yes, I've examined the old plans and the new plans, and the building has been shifted 15 feet away from the property line. The only thing I didn't see on there, which you had agreed to at our last hearing, was putting six arborivites or something along the back line to improve the screening.
We will-
That was your drawing, you know, last hearing.
We had submitted a plan showing proposed landscaping, and we'll be happy to put that on the final plans.
Yeah, because I, when I looked at the new plans, I didn't see reference to it, what was there, which was good, he's going to mark, you know, the existing no-cut, no-disturbed land, you know, all of the things we talked about have been incorporated, except the screening, line of screening trees.
And you are 100% right, and we will incorporate that in the final plan set.
Yeah, and then just, you know, as an added condition, but otherwise, I'm in favor of this project with the conditions as annotated plus one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peck. Mr. Donaldson?
I have no comments, I'm in favor of this project.
Mr. Bolton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant has been here multiple times, the applicant has done anything and everything we have requested of the applicant, I have no further comments, and I'm in favor of this project.
Okay, now it's my turn for the big comment and question, right? Believe me, I, myself, I appreciate you doing the extra work and going the extra mile to make the adjustments, to work with the neighbors and the town to create the plan that you have currently submitted, and I am in favor of it also with the added one being the arborivites back on to the property and on the plan. So, with that, is there any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing that, I want to take a motion.
I will happily make the motion to approve VOSD application, B 644 for 15 Coles Lane, with the conditions as discussed.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your project, and please keep the neighbor that you're working with happy, and work with them, please.
We've been trying our best to, all along.
Keep doing what you've been doing, and we appreciate it, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the planning board this evening? Yes, Mr. Bolton?
Just very briefly, I wanted to announce that the first master plan committee meeting has taken place. We have a very lively and engaged panel of volunteers for this project. We have received five fully compliant proposals for our consultants, and we, at our next meeting, will be discussing those proposals and screening them for our further evaluation, and that next meeting will be taking place on one week from today, February 21st, here at Town Hall, 6:00 P.M.
Fantastic, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?